We're going to bring to order the June twenty-fourth Selectments Meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have an appointment right at seven o'clock with Chief Galvin.
You need to swing your chair so that people can hear you. You have to enunciate. There you go. Pretend you're coaching.
You don't want me to yell?
No.
It was a long weekend. So, we had to talk about the ACO to start with. So, we had made some plans for this year to make some changes and go into contract services and that's, obviously, it's caused some angst around town and some concerns and I've had some discussions with Helen and we decided maybe we would move in baby steps and move a little bit slower on this. The problem then became how we budgeted. So, all we budgeted for was an expense. So, now it's trying to figure out what we can do to get around that. Helen and I brainstormed, had some discussions with June. Based on our bylaw and who can act as the ACO, it includes police officers. So, my suggestion is, at this point, to appoint Helen as a special police officer slash ACO for one year. Therefore, we can pay her four hundred and fifty dollars stipend out of the police budget. Cover a cellphone, email, and then work with her through the year to allow her to continue the services the way they're done. Unfortunately, we eliminated the salary line item under our control and put it all into expenses. So, I think it's a fair way to do it as we move forward and allow Helen and I to work together to move things into the future.
Is there any questions?
You good?
I'm good.
I have a question. That's okay. What is the amount that you have down for expenses?
So, our expense was budgeted for this coming year for eighteen thousand dollars.
And if we should have a special town meeting, would we change something?
We could shift it, we could shift it, yeah, if we needed to, yeah.
Okay.
Or we could run it that way for the year. I think I can manage that.
Okay. Are you coming up with a contract of some kind?
I don't think we would need a contract at that point. It would just be us to work out as, you know, like as an employee that what the job just, reporting is, and we talked about that, just about monthly reports. At least sitting down and meeting, you know, a few times every couple of months, if not more, as needed.
It might be worth, just to make sure that everything is working out the way it should so that when you talk about this next year to write down what the expectations are.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And we'll sit and we'll work through it throughout the year.
I also wrote a letter earlier to you. I brought a copy. Can that be put in?
Into the record?
The original. This has been squished on my hand tonight. Just so you have as a record.
Thank you.
I think we got this by email.
You might have at the time.
I did. We have it.
Okay. All right. I'll put this in here.
So, I will have an official, like, a letter for you for an appointment for your next meeting.
Okay.
And then allow us to move forward.
Do you have a question, Mark? June, do you have a question at all?
Just about, just about job description and job duties.
Yeah.
So, the status is going to be changed to special police officer. And so, is the job description going to reflect that, that change, that it's under the umbrella of special police officer?
We, I don't, there is no job description at this point.
Okay.
So, we can maybe sit down and develop one, so we have it for the future and as we go and work with Helen to do that. I kind of have a punch list of, of things that would need to be in there already.
Just need to be run by personnel?
The job description, just like.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay.
I have another question. I'm still confused. I totally understand the special police officer. But the pay is only four hundred and fifty for one year. How, I mean, that's...
No, no, no.
A month.
Oh, monthly. Thank you. Okay.
That must answer your question.
Wow.
Okay, Tom. So, no need for, like, step or grade or anything? It's just an expense?
It's an on-call stipend because it's on-call service, yeah.
All right, so June will fix everything. Okay, cool.
Yeah.
So, will Helen continue to do her thing?
Yes.
So, there'll be no functional change?
Correct.
And Helen's happy?
I'm happy. At least I'm not going anywhere.
Question, Mary?
Her term expires Sunday.
So, a reappointment now for...
Can we do the reappointment now, even though it's not on the agenda?
Even though I don't have it written?
Yeah, because our next meeting's not until nine?
After, yeah, after the fourth, seventh or something?
The fir-, it's the Tuesday, ninth, yeah.
Is it the ninth? Okay.
Yeah. So, that would leave us a week and a few bit of days without official coverage.
If the board feels, well, if the board feels it necessary to appoint tonight, and it sounds like it, it would be a good idea, this could be under the topics not anticipated by the chair within forty-eight hours. So, you have the item on the agenda.
Yeah.
And so, if you want to have the appointment accompanied, that I think that would, that would cover you.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we just vote and then what, sign later? Yeah, yeah.
So, do I hear a motion to appoint Helen as the ACO?
Motion to appoint Helen as the ACO for the year.
Big second on that one.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the second, I think it had something on there about the charger update.
Yes, there's an update on the EV station.
I, I've left three messages with National Grid and I'm waiting for a callback from the gentleman from National Grid on the program. We just, are we going to run into an issue with the timeline that was initially? So, I'm waiting just for a callback from him.
To see whether this will work out?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will let you know what I hear.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Stayed around.
Thanks.
Try to keep the bats off my screen so I won't have to keep going.
All right. That's about seven-ten, and we have another appointment with Christopher Slade.
Once again, this is just an FYI meeting. And I believe you have received the formal application.
Probably.
That's the one. My lawyer thought it was better to follow the normal procedures of mailing it to you rather than by bringing it in.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I do not have a draft for the open space agreement. Lawyers, that's all it is.
Okay.
But in any event, I met with Conservation last week, had a very pleasant conversation. Of course, the devil is in the detail, but they felt positively towards our idea of homeowners owning the land, homeowners association, the town of Berlin owning the development rights and conservation restriction. And I'm sure they'll be communicating with you. I'm going to make myself available to the planning board if they want to talk to me next week, or I think they do meet next week.
Okay.
What was the other thing I wanted to mention? Oh, members of the Conservation Commission asked, could we make sure that restriction was on file before we broke ground? Now, I have no objection to this at all. Be happy to do it. If we can get lawyers to move. If you were to reach a decision and release it, the town's first refusal, perhaps we could do something else to hold our feet to the fire, such as we enter into an agreement that we will not apply for any building permits until it is on file. Keeping in mind, getting it on file is very important to you. Without building permits, we're looking at one big loss because we'll be working on roads and infrastructure, and if you don't build anything, we're sunk. So, believe me, we're going to work to get it on file.
Okay.
Okay, but we'll have to work that out. And hopefully, you can get all the information you need. Mary knows how to reach me. I'm available twenty-four seven to you for any information you need.
And are you going to speak to the Conservation about this too, the possibility of waiting till there's building permits?
I mentioned it to them that night. They did not commit themselves.
Okay.
But nor did they start shooting.
All right.
So, hopefully, they'll, they'll take...
Might be a good sign.
They'll get that favorably.
Yeah.
Along with yourselves, of course.
All right.
Okay?
All right.
I'm out of here.
Thank you.
Put you ahead of schedule.
Yeah. All right. Got a couple of minutes. Do we want to approve the minutes of June fourth opening and executive session and June nineteenth open session?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And let's see, we have, my goodness. Let's see, we have line item transfers. Fire and EMS expenses will be paid from salary full-time, ten thousand dollars. Uh, do you want to do them separately or?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I guess...
Please, we probably should, shouldn't we?
Yeah, I guess so because we've got to sign.
Motion to approve.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we've got Chapter thirty-two B that will pay, will be paid from unemployment in the amount of seven thousand three hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Maybe. Well, they're all in here. That's fine. All in favor? Did I say that?
Aye.
Aye. And we have public building expenses to be paid from snow and salt overtime wages in the amount of four thousand dollars.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You guys are usually sitting on this side of the table when I'm in your meeting.
Yeah, there's the last one to be signed.
And we have a bill scheduled for MRI for the fire and EMS chief recruiting services. The second invoice for sixty-seven fifty and the third final invoice for twenty-seven fifty.
Do you know where you approved these?
Uh, no, I don't think so. We did not approve these previously, correct?
You, you entered into a contract with MRI and you approved the addendum last week.
Yeah. Okay.
So, these are the invoices.
Oh, I see, yep.
But it's special article spending, so you need to...
Yes, money is going to be coming from the special article and then ex, uh, selectmen expenses in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty because we have gone, had an additional contract.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The chair. Are the services completed on this? Have they completed their services?
They will be on Friday.
They will be on Friday?
Some final interviews.
Okay, so the check won't be issued until after?
Right, right. And we wanted to get it in this fiscal year, correct?
Well, you still have two weeks.
Right.
That you could pay it. Because we'll be doing the warrants on Friday because of the holidays.
But we don't have another...
And we can hold the check until...
Yeah.
The way that they worded the invoice says that upon scheduling the final screening panel meeting, so creative invoicing, so, because they haven't performed the services yet until Friday, but that's not what they say triggered it.
Okay, so I would recommend, just as June suggested, to just hold the check until the services are complete.
Eloise has posted the meeting?
Yes, I posted it this morning.
Thank you.
Okay.
I had to find out what fifteen hundred hours was.
Yeah, me too.
But it's three P M.
Correct.
Right. So, am I hearing a motion to approve at this point?
Some...
And seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, there's a need for, I believe, two signatures because it's coming from two places. Did I say all in favor?
You can say it again. I don't think you did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I guess I'm going to sign.
Oh, you can sign anywhere you want there.
Doesn't matter.
No.
I'll sign beside me, so...
I don't know if we needed to more than...
Okay.
But that's good. All right, so we have an appointment for our highway superintendent who just walked out the door.
He'll be back in. Why does it feel like we just talked to you?
Because we had scheduling conflicts and then one thing led to another and we did just talk.
Oh, okay. I was thinking it was a little deja vu that I thought you were just here.
We did June, April's report, end of May.
Okay. All right.
What do you got? Everybody got the copy I sent electronically?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, I made it through the first town meeting. Everybody was kind to the highway department.
Yes.
Mowing is a thing right now. Lots of it in between the rainstorms. We have our co-op kid who started today seasonal, so he's off of co-op. When he goes back to school, we're going to put him back on co-op until the money from the state runs out, so we'll take advantage of that. Uh, we did a conservation parking area on Lyman. Finished the beautification of the town offices out here with...
The squirrely trees.
Yeah.
So, go ahead, sorry. I'll wait.
So, our sweeping's done, basically, except for the washouts after the rains. Uh, we hosted another Bay State Roads training seminar. Jimmy received the Bay State Roads, Roads Scholar Award, which is pretty remarkable. It's a nice achievement for him. That's all, I guess.
Can we talk about, Mary, do we run it through Dave for the sheriff to come and do the picking up of the town? Picking up of the trash in the town? Was that being scheduled through you?
I haven't scheduled them yet, but we can, I can reach out. I'll send him an email.
Okay.
And they'll...
Do we know, do we know what roads? And how many do they do? Do you know-ish?
It depends on how much time they have, for one, how many guys they come with.
Okay.
There's a lot of variables.
All right. So, what are you thinking of for the roads?
Well, you hate to put them on the mains, but those are the roads that really need it.
What, like Lancaster?
Yeah, west, central, I mean, river.
Gatesboro. Okay.
So, what I do is I try to put them on a side road till, like, ten o'clock or something and then they can get a couple hours on a, on a main road.
Okay.
That's worked pretty well last time.
Yeah, and maybe you can just schedule this going forward at a, a regular, semi-regular sort of basis rather than having it all frickin' roll through the board's office.
That'd be cool, yeah, if they're willing to do it. We certainly have a need for it, unfortunately.
Absolutely.
You have to handle it anyways when they're, they're here, so it makes sense for him to be the one in terms of scheduling.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, I'll send him an email tomorrow to see when the next available is.
Okay. And they sent you a note, like, oh, an hour and a half ago on the blinky sign? Can you change it to say, like, you know, keep rolling clean, don't throw your trash, don't be a jerk, something nice?
Okay.
So, you'll have to come up with it because we all know what I'd want to say.
Peg says.
Peg says, don't be a jerk and throw your trash out the window, pick it up. Okay. Okay, cool. Thank you.
No problem.
Or you could show one of us how to change the blinky sign.
I'd be afraid.
As you should. Awesome.
Anybody have any questions?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm concerned about the amount of spraying that's done along the roads. And I believe that the town last year used Roundup. And I feel very strongly that that's a very unsafe, hazardous material to be putting, to kill weeds. And I'm hoping it's...
We don't spray. We can't spray weed.
I think we stopped at some point.
In order to spray, it would take a act of Congress. It'd be about a five-year process to get permitting in order to...
So, you're not doing it this year?
What, what killed, as, so, last year, it was...
I wasn't here. I can't answer that.
I think it was when Keith was on and after that, there was a cease and desist on the spraying, not only for Berlin but other towns.
Oh, good.
So, in order to get permits to spray, you have to go to the Department of Agriculture. You have to get a five-year management, vegetative management plan and a yearly operational plan. And it's a, I did it in Lumsford and it took us two years to get the permits, so, and I was working almost full-time.
So, they'll be mowing this year, but no spraying?
Correct.
Terrific.
Good. I'm, I like that.
She's got her whole list done now.
Okay, that's all.
Peter, do you have a question?
So, wearing the beekeeper hat, I'm particularly interested in this subject. I think the state sprays and it's sort of on a town-by-town basis, but I don't know what the rules are. Do you know what the rules are, Dave?
So, they spray for mosquitoes. They're not spraying for vegetation.
Right, but that's something that, at least the beekeepers don't want.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. What, they, they do have a website. We had this, we talked this...
At Coffee Talk.
At Coffee, yeah. Central Mass Mosquito Control.
Right, so I've been putting up the plates to say no spraying. Maybe some of them have seen that.
You have to tell them.
You have to actually call them and invite them onto your property. They just don't randomly spray everywhere.
But don't they do streets?
I'm not sure. I think you have to invite them.
Yeah, I think they have a truck that does this, whatever the relevant streets are.
I just posted the July posting last Thursday.
Oh, for the streets?
You have to sign up for it. You can sign up for it, but they also post. I mean, that's why we pay them. The town pays them.
Right.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Will you wear subblock?
No, I get roasted.
We'll put it in the budget for next year's...
We took four trees off the Neat Pond.
That's good.
Thank you, Mr. Dale, for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll let y'all go now. Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thanks for coming!
Thank you. Our problems are done. See ya. Thanks.
Thank you. Bye, Helen.
See you later.
All right. The fire and EMS chief executive recruitment update. I think we already heard there will be four candidates interviewed on Friday at three o'clock. Correct, Eloise?
Huh? I didn't hear you. You're very soft-spoken.
I'm just giving the fire and EMS update.
Four coming back in on Friday, the three plus the one?
Yes, they are coming.
Yeah.
And that is in executive session, correct?
Yes.
That was starting and open.
Yes.
And you said four o'clock?
Three.
So, you get a crowd.
Three o'clock?
Three o'clock.
No assessment, just interview?
I think one needs to go through the...
I think it says from fifteen hundred hours to eighteen thirty, maybe?
Yeah, so...
So, I just told them, I just need to know when it starts. When it ends is not my issue.
So, three o'clock to six-thirty-ish?
I put in whatever they tell me. That's what I put in.
Okay.
Okay, that, that's the update. Um, we have an appointment of Karen Chandler to the Historical Commission through May thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Chandler.
All right, and we have time for the letter to the legislators in DCR about the community garden well pump project funding. You both see this?
Yeah. Yeah, the letter seems straightforward.
Seemed fine to me. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You can take that apart if you need to. Is there anybody here for the POTUS party?
Yeah, I don't see them, so... Are you going to pull them over there? What are you waiting for?
I believe it was the attorney for...
Harold Reader. He's not an attorney, but he's a project manager for ZPE for that, what you're not rest.
Oh. Okay.
No, maybe he's just running late. Just keep going.
It's only four ninety-five. He could be on a very bad app, so... I mean, it's been ninety-three hours. I didn't mean to say again.
It was close for a while today.
Yeah.
But then, and then two ninety also.
Oh, everything backed up, yeah.
So, he did call to confirm, so...
He's just running late.
All right, well, we'll do the approval of the special act and filing to validate our annual town meeting.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there's nothing to sign here, correct?
Oh, there were two letters. No, it was just, are we good with the wording? Make sure that everything's all set from what I read in the email.
No. No, nothing for us to sign. Look fine to me. Yep. Okay. Do we want to do other new business, old business? I had a meeting at Devon's last week.
I think your visitor's here.
Oh, he is, okay.
Excellent.
Yes.
Come on up.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
No worries.
So, I'm Harold Reader with Zero Point Development, ZPT Energy Solutions. I'm here for two things. One, the protective covenant for solar project off of Randall Road and a decommissioning charity bond that I had, I think it's been going back and forth for a little while. Town Council has reviewed it and now I'm here looking for your signature approval on that as well, so... The protective covenant was in your solar bylaws, so half of the, or the same amount of acres that you're using for solar has to be put into a protective covenant with Concom and your approval. Two weeks ago, I got Conservation's approval and signature on it, and now I'm looking for your signature and approval here tonight.
Okay. And you do have equal...
Yep.
I, I think I did look at the map, but I couldn't really tell.
Yeah, so the parcel is twenty-one point five acres and the protective covenant is the same, so the protective... Yeah, so the parcel is twenty-one point five acres and the protective covenant is the same, so the protective covenant is everything that's in gray. And then the solar piece is what you see there.
So there was no need, I heard there was a need to possibly buy land from a, in a butter.
Uh, nope.
Not happening?
Nope, it was not necessary to do that.
Okay.
Nice.
And town council has also reviewed the literature, uh, language within the protective covenant itself as well.
All right. Do you wanna take a look at that? All right. So we have a declaration of protective covenant, covenant. Is there anything else you need, need to tell us, or?
I don't think so, um.
Okay.
There's, um, I mean, it could go, there was a few changes that the town council had requested and we kinda went back and forth on that. Um, it was more so just like the rights within the protective covenant, but other than that, you know, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. I did take a look at it earlier, um.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's pretty standard and town council has reviewed it, so.
Okay.
Agreed.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know if that can be signed tonight, I have, I actually have the, um, original that has CONCOM signature on it as well.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Does it have?
There's a, I guess it's individual, okay, perfect.
Ah. There we go.
Do you need that one signed as well?
Um. Yeah, if you, if you don't mind, I guess.
Yes, Eloise is shaking her head, yes.
There's only one original, or, yeah, I just want the original.
Well. This, this must be the original then.
I put a sticky on it so it wouldn't be signed.
Yeah, I would say that this is a.
I think conservation must have signed two then.
We only have a photocopy of conservation, we don't have their original signature.
Yeah, this looks like a photocopy.
Okay.
So I don't know what you got there, number one, that's the one, that's the protective covenant. I got it. Oh, did you give them one as well?
Yes.
Yes, he did, he just handed us one.
I did.
Gotcha, doesn't matter.
So, why don't we just, so we have two copies then?
Well, if you don't wanna sign two copies, I don't want to lose any of them.
That's okay.
There's no harm in signing two, you know. Harold, if you're gonna take that original with you, I'll just take a copy of it.
Okay.
Uh, Harold, I'm here, I hold the right to ask them.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have to observe them signing, we can do it right now.
Please make sure to produce ID for the delivery.
That is correct, the real license, yes.
There we go. I think this one's all set, Mary.
All right, this one's signed. Thanks, Mary.
All right, and we have.
Decommissioning bond?
Decommissioning, and can you wanna tell us about that?
Um, so it's sort of the same process, uh, it's been gone back and forth for a while. Um, I'm not, I believe you guys might have even seen a few of the revisions, um, town council has reviewed it and finally approved, um, what is in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's an estimate on the back there for, um, just kinda the breakdown of where we got the amount for the charity bond. Um, and that's really bad out there, it's the language of, um, this letter here that you'll be looking to get your signature on, which I think you have in front of you. And that's, that's it.
Do I hear a motion to sign the document?
Motion to sign the document.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sign two copies, all right. Does this need another rise? No. Okay. One for him?
Good, there you go, Harold.
Thank you very much. I apologize for being a little late there.
Don't worry about it, we were waiting for you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
I'm assuming the other two, we were gonna, we're gonna wait on the pilot, which is the assessor's, I believe, document.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, write a first refusal. Um.
So it will just defer to the next meeting?
We'll defer until.
Ninth, July ninth?
Until they're ready, I guess.
Okay.
And town council.
We might wanna, just 'cause this has been so slow, we might wanna check in before the next meeting, though.
Mm-hmm, check in with town council?
Whoever, the assessors, town council, everybody, just to keep this moving forward because this has been hanging out for a while.
And the assessors.
Right. Town council's a little slow. Little bit slow. All right, um. So. As I was saying, uh, I had a meeting at Devon's, um, last week. Uh, they had a discussion on notification protocol for a search, because the issue with the, um, kids who got locked in the bunker up at Devon's. Um, I think the issue is more with Devon's itself wanting their, their fire to be notified also. But for generally for a search, the local police are the ones that are notified and not fire unless there's a need for EMS when they find whoever they're looking for. Um. The budget is looking good, um. We have been putting documents in Google Drive for the admins to take a look at, um, but, no, we've been, I'm sorry, we've been putting it in Dropbox, but they're going to change it to Google Drive at some point. Um, they had an open house at the dispatch and had, it was a great turnout, um. Ross, as you may have seen in the emails, our director, um, would love to come to each individual town and talk about, um, dispatch itself. I think there's a lot of people in the dark perhaps in Berlin as well as the, the other towns about how it works and, um, so at some point, we could ask him to come to maybe a coffee talk or a, a meeting or, um, some, any event that we'd like him to come to. Uh, the deputy director tracked all of the sick vacation time, et cetera, back to two thousand thirteen to make sure that it was okay. Um, they didn't share any issues, so I'm assuming that everything's fine. Um. Apparently we need a firewall. Um, with our website. And so we're not really in compliance, could be thirty-five thousand dollars for this firewall, but Lancaster suggested they may be able to help fund through an IT grant. So, I think that was it. Anybody else?
Um, just, I had, um, gotten permission to get together a few people to talk about the Mass Works grant that Peter had brought up. Um, Dave Smith and Tom Galvin and Tim Wheeler and I did meet on that. Um, Tim and Tom were gonna do some follow-up, 'cause I believe there's a meeting on Complete Streets shortly, um, so they will come back around with, um, and speak to CMRPC about how that could maybe work into the whole picture. Um, the, the thought was that probably this wouldn't be the year to apply for it, um, 'cause they're not quite ready to go, but that it might be able to be applied for the following year, um, and applied to some of those projects or some of the hotspots in town where we have traffic issues.
Okay.
Did, did you reach out to Tom, we should've asked while he was here about, um, the concerns brought up at Coffee Talk?
No, I have not yet, I haven't had a chance.
Okay. Okay. I suppose I should've warned him then, he may get a deluge of people calling to him sitting in their driveways.
He might wanna do that.
All right, well, no, there was just lots of chatter.
Yeah.
And people were complaining about speeding through the town, it's like, well, then, call. Call the police department, say, come sit in my driveway, come sit on my yard if you wanna do something to stop it, so. It was considerable discussion, so I'm hoping that people do call.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I'll, I'll warn him, I'll give him a heads up. He might be coming.
Yeah.
Actually, it was Sharon's name that I gave out, so, you know, I suppose I should warn her.
There you go. All right, uh, it's about.
Close enough.
Seven forty-five, come on up, Peter.
If you walk slowly.
Yeah.
There you go, there you go.
Do what I'm told.
That's right.
All righty. So I have a couple of updates and questions, so I, um, brought to the attention of the EDC last week that I volunteered us to deal with the beautification thing due to someone's hammering. Um, and we. We came to realize that it's a two-part thing, the beautification thing, there's the litter piece and there's the pretty piece. Like this. Right?
Oh. Isn't that pretty?
Those are nice.
So, that's not our town, obviously, but, um, I'm working on the litter piece, I don't really have anything to report, but the, the pretty piece, this picture.
Zoom in on that, Mr. Big.
Got it. Anyway, um. We didn't wanna embark on the, this kind of an idea, sponsored signs, sponsored plantings without your tacit liking it or approval to do that. I mean, how we're gonna fund it, whether it be the stores or merchants or businesses in town or some other, uh, funding source, we don't know. We wanna develop the idea, but we can't develop or shouldn't develop it without your tacit approval. So plantings and signs that would be sponsored in a perfect world, how do you feel about that?
Um, Cheryl has already put together, um, something for the circles and some of the other places in town that would probably also be applicable to this. Um, and then another idea I had brought up previously was perhaps the money that we get from any movies that come to town could also maybe be put towards a fund for beautification in town since it's sort of a self-perpetuating cycle, so maybe that's also we can, something we can follow up on?
I think the movie thing is hit and miss, right, we can have a big year, one year and zero for two years.
It is. You could, and we may have to like budget something otherwise, but it's also, you know, one way to sort of tailor that money if we get it.
Mm-hmm.
To projects like that.
Not to ask this dumb, dumb question, but who, who's Cheryl?
She was on the original email.
Cheryl Sharon, who?
Who is she?
A person in town who was tired of all the.
Who wanted to get involved, uh, in.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll find, I'll find her in the email?
The first row.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think you were.
And she, she did send out some stuff and she was talking to, I think it was Marlboro about how they went about, um, getting the sponsors and that sort of thing, so she's already done a lot of legwork, so she's definitely somebody you wanna touch base with.
Okay. So, does that sound like something, this idea, something that the board's interested in?
What, what specifically, or?
Well, developing us a way to accomplish this, whether it be funding it from the tax base or funding it from sponsors like stores and merchants, um, to beautify with signs like this and, and plantings. How we do it, who administers it, I. Actually, I asked the question of the EDC, I said, who's gonna administer it, and they didn't say, oh, no, not us, I'm not sure why.
That was, that was one of the things that Cheryl was also looking into in, I think it was Marlboro who actually.
Who would lead the charge?
Well, the, the economic development thing makes a certain amount of sense because the beautification brings economic development arguably, so.
I doubt anybody's gonna fight you for it if you wanna do it.
Thanks.
Do you have a question?
Well, through, through the chair, um, I think it does, like, like Lisa said, I think it makes a lot of sense to talk with Sharon because she had ideas about adopting, um, uh, planting areas and things like that.
Cheryl, Cheryl, Cheryl.
I'm sure, that's right, Cheryl.
That's her last name, Cheryl.
Cheryl Sharon.
Cheryl Sharon, okay Cheryl, my apologies, Cheryl.
There will be a quiz later.
So, yeah, I think coordination makes a lot of sense and once, once I get here, I'll see how I can, I can help you out, move that along. Um, I have a couple of other thoughts for funding ideas down the road too, so.
Good. We did have, uh, I think the first coffee talk we had, didn't we have someone who was bringing this up?
Well, it just came up and then, you know, Lisa had talked about, kinda like, you know, rent a street.
I think he was talking more along the buildings, the building fronts or something, but, and then it, it got developed into.
No, I mean, it's, yeah. It's been, it's been around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, are you interested in this concept, the three of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll develop it and represent something in cooperation with Margaret and Cheryl.
Okay. That sounds good.
Um, and, and then the litter thing, I, I haven't quite identified a solution for that, but, um, so I'm like.
The litter, but.
Litter.
Oh, litter.
Man, I'm thinking about street captains, owners of pieces of streets or full streets that are responsible, then there's a regional captain and a, uh, leader to the whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you might wanna look at s- some of the midwestern towns, because there really is, there's an a- adopt, like, the town I'm from has an a- you adopt a street and a lot of the organizations in town, the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and different clubs.
Yeah.
And businesses and.
Well, we see in highways, adopt, adopt a highway.
In Hope and, um, Mysore already adopted a certain section, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, there's a model out there for that, I'm actually shocked that Massachusetts doesn't have.
Yes, agree. So, that's the litter piece, and switching back to the Mass Works thing, so, I think the three of you know that I introduced Dave Smith, Jeanne Mitchell, Library and so on to the Mass Works CMRPC thing. So, long story short, uh, the three ideas, or the two ideas that I had and then Dave added one was the tight tanks, even get funding out of the, uh, the non-economic development portion of the Mass Works program called Strap. So I've made the introduction today, actually, between Jeanne Mitchell, Dave and CMRPC, and they're off to the proverbial races, hopefully. And then, uh, I made the introduction, or had a conversation with Dave about street paving, and then he said he really would like a salt shed or a sand shed. Right, Dave?
He left.
Salt shed.
Anyway, so, I looked it all in one conversation, I've introduced them to, or Dave to Carrie at CMRPC as well. 'Cause as I think, I think I mentioned, there's eight million dollars, it's less restricted from the state, this was brought to the, our attention at the regional EDC by the Mass Economic Development Speaker we had, who was the deputy. So, that's underway for whatever it's worth. Um, and apparently, there's a possibility, so says Jeanne, that they could buy some land behind the library that would obviate the need of the tight tank, but.
I think that's been on the table before, but I don't know if it didn't work out, or.
I see.
And just make sure everybody is in the loop, like I said, 'cause I just had a meeting about this too, so make sure everybody's on the same page about what it makes sense to apply for with this grant, because it might actually make more sense to apply for a larger grant for the street issues than the traffic issues that we have that are involved for the library.
There is, there's something to be said about that, um, I, when I asked the deputy, who was our speaker, if small grants, because we're talking about an average of a two-million-dollar grant that the state gives out, and we're looking, in the case of a tight tank, at the most a hundred thousand, maybe less.
Mm-hmm.
And each roadway mile is a hundred thousand dollars, so we're not looking for millions, we're looking for small amounts.
No.
He said that might fill in the gap at the end of the grant process, so if they're giving away eight million dollars for, to seven-thousand-person towns or less, um, a few fifties here and there might be fillers. So I think that, I know the date is August ninth, and I'd like, I, I've promoted it to the extent that I can, now it's up to CMRPC to help, and Dave and Jeanne and her peers at Library to. Now it's up to CMRPC to help, and Dave and Jeanne and her peers at Library to pursue it or not pursue it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody is, everybody is talking, because it looks, sounds like two different groups are going in two different directions, and.
Mm-hmm.
That's right, well, I think you're dealing with the townwide uh complete streets thing, and I'm dealing with shed, um, roads.
Yeah, but it's still, it's one grant.
Well, no, the most, there are multiple grants.
Particularly, I, I mean, I, I know, but you have to, I'm just making sure everybody needs to communicate what's going on, so that we're not.
Well, I'm out of it now, I've made the introductions, it's now up to CMRPC, Dave and Jeanne and, and your group to, to move it along, exactly.
Completely.
To move it along. Well, especially the library, 'cause we're on such a tight time frame.
I made that point, and I suggested to Jeanne, you know, some, some steps she might take, because there were, well, the discussion was, it can't be ten or twenty thousand dollars a year or two, she says, to pump the tank, and I said, seems crazy to me, I said, why don't you just call Cully and see what it costs? And she was uncomfortable taking that, making that step without the group talking about it, so it's a stylistic thing in terms of the group, the, the.
Agreed.
Library folks, so.
Yeah.
You know, if, if one of you are, are in the loop with Library, you might have a conversation.
Okay. Awesome.
How does he, all right?
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right.
Could I just make a quick statement, when the room was full and I was sitting back here, I could not hear you at all?
None of us?
None.
Oh.
Maybe the first time you was told you were too soft spoken.
No.
If that's gonna be a problem, though, I think rather than yelling, I think we need to talk about some sort of amplification, because in order to make my voice heard at the back of the room, I have to speak really loudly, I will be hoarse, but I, no, I absolutely, I know it's an issue.
I'm just, he's gonna stay, and he's very quiet.
I'm just saying, it might be time to start talking about some sort of amplification, even if it's a little bit of amplification.
To think about it, huh?
Okay.
But then it might hear you whispering to your neighbor, too.
Either way, I mean, that's, absolutely, it's a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eloise.
Thanks, bye-bye.
But I don't wanna have to yell at all at meetings either.
All right, um, I believe we may have covered everything. Correct?
Thank you.
Um, do, Margaret, have, have you been, you haven't had, looked at the executive session minutes that were.
I have, no, I have not, no.
Do you want to look at them before we decide which ones to release, or, um?
No, I think, I, you've, you've done this before, where you've reviewed several, oh, you haven't, okay, okay.
No. Well, I have as a school committee member, but not, the selectmen have not.
Okay, um, Mary, uh, are you, are you all set with um the, um, the reasons in executive session and what to recommend?
Reasons to enter?
Well, no, the, um, so, executive session minutes, if something, if something in the minutes um is, uh, is still legally protected
Right.
under the reason you entered executive session for, um, then they'd still be withheld, so if you're clear on that, I, I wouldn't, I don't have a problem.
Okay.
You know.
'Cause you broke them down into three buckets for us, correct?
Actually, Chris and Judy did.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I didn't.
All right, well, the email, the email that you sent around, I think, yeah.
Well, only in the bundles, yes, they were sent in, in bundles, yes.
Okay.
As Judy and Chris, um, separated them.
I'm, I just was wondering whether you all wanted to go into executive session to discuss this? But, we have to do this in executive session, so.
We can, if we're all here, I mean, let's just get it done, 'cause it's been hanging around for a while.
Okay. All right, so. In that case, do I hear a motion to go into executive session for Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with open meeting law, general law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two F and G, to perform periodic bulk review of executive session meeting minutes and allow them to be withheld from, and allow them to be withheld from the public until the purpose for confidentiality has expired, and consider or vote authorization for release. How's that? Do I, do I hear that motion? Or I can make that motion.
So much.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Yeah.
You're welcome.
And we're not coming back?
And not coming.
And we're not coming back.
Right, I'm sorry, yes.
And vote. Okay.
Um, Keef, aye.
Oh, okay, Stone aye.